The meeting back over recess, we had our earlier work session. My 12th member won't here tonight. We have carried out from where the lockdown is here to give the invitation. We asked Mr. Coke to come up and remain standing for the pleasure.
Let us pray. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all of the, each of our supervisors. Let us just pray. Father in heaven, we just thank you for the day that you have given us today. That is a day that we can live for you. We thank you for all that has blessed us and blessed this county and the administrative part of it and the government of it because we know that Romans 13 tells us that those who lead are a part of your servants. And we just ask the day that you, tonight, whether that you give them wisdom upon all of the decisions that they have to make as the citizens of this county. And I ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight. We do have a quorum. We'll move right into the agenda. We have citizens' time. We have one person signed up, Ms. Linda Myers.
Yes, gentlemen, good evening. I have done a lot of canvassing on this issue. I'm going to give you a copy of a resolution that was unanimously passed in July by the Washington County Board of Supervisors. It reads that the Washington County Board of Supervisors opposes consideration by the United States to house illegal aliens of any age in the county. I think this is in the forefront of everybody's agenda. I think it's a very positive thing. Here is the resolution. The public would like, your constituents would like to see this on your agenda at the next meeting and hopefully approved as soon as possible. All the information is there. If you need more, you can go on the county website for Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Having no one else signed up, I'll close citizens' time. We'll move on with the agenda, the minutes of the previous minute, meeting. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion. We approve minutes.
I have a second. Any discussion, any correction or changes that need to be made in the minutes? Hearing none, I'll do roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
I abstain.
Motion passes six with one abstention. Next item on the agenda is payment of the invoices.
I'll make a motion that we pay the invoices as presented.
I have a second. Any discussion on any invoice? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Chair votes, motion passes. Going to old business. We have building grounds committee report.
Yes, it's in the summary there that we recommend hiring the firm to dispose of certain pieces of property and that one property be mowed and prepped for sale and to move forward with that surplus property sale.
Okay. We have a motion from the building and grounds committee to set Stanley King Land Auction Companies to do the auction of the property at each location. Come from committee, it doesn't need a second, any discussion. Are these absolute auctions or are these, we're going to put a minimum on any of them?
I think the proposal calls them for to be absolute. I don't think that there's a minimum on at this point.
Okay. And they'll be held on site of the properties?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair.
Before you leave that subject, Mr. Chairman, while we schedule these auctions, there needs to be a public hearing declaring all these property surplus. We can set that.
When have you got it scheduled to be, have the public hearing at the day meeting?
We can have the public hearing at the next night meeting.
Next night meeting. At 7:05 PM, I don't have...
That's fine.
Anything else on that? Okay, we moved right along. I said old business, but was anything under old business? We went right into new business.
No, sir.
Petition for water. Mr. Dalton?
You have petition from some citizens on Olive Branch Road, which is just off of Dunford Road, that would like consideration from the board to provide water out to their, public water to their area. The first step with, obviously, this would be to do a PER so we can get to all the total costs so we can apply for either VDH funding or DHCD or rural development funding. I think at this point...
I think you're in that same rock that you have been on. We're going to go with it.
Is there anything we need to do?
Well, I think if we can get a little direction to start making applications, if we can find some money to do the PER and move that forth, then if we can't, during the same period, we'll get proposals from people that's on their open-ended contract to take to the Water Committee, if that's acceptable.
Okay.
How long is this extension?
Well, we've got water down at the intersection of 94 and...
Got water on 690.
Yeah. So, is it a mile up through there, Coy?
Yeah, I see it.
It's, Olive Branch is on the new road, right there off, it's off of Dunford Road where they're working grading right now for the, VDOT's grading to bring this system into the road and pave it for next year. So, we really need to get some of this done before they pave the road.
Is any water on Dunford Road?
On the far end.
What if we come up Dunford Road during, and make the right turn up there? Can we catch, can we catch the water down there, then walk somewhere?
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll look at all those possible routes on the PER and pick the best route. It may be that we need to have a community meeting over at Sheffy and see exactly how much, there's a lot of small private roads throughout there. Grandview and off Olive Branch, there's two or three off of Olive Branch, so...
Do we need a motion to begin the consideration process of that?
If, if you want to make a motion to get proposals for engineering firms that's on open-ended and take it to the Water Committee, that probably an order.
I'll make that motion. I'll say it for you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Chair votes, aye. Next item on the agenda is request from the Don Crisp, Director of Austin, about the Austinville fuel spill and cleanup, to amend and, request to amend and appropriate wastewater budget for professional services of $16,432.60. Mr. Dalton, where are we at on collecting this money from?
Any board package, you have a letter that the county attorney has written the president of Lead Mines Estates. So, we're in the, today, we had a response from Lead Mines Estates. They're going to summarize it, that they've asked that we wait until they get reimbursement from the state for the underground tank. But that's a fallacy because there's no reimbursement for the underground storage tank unless somebody pays the bill first. He's made, Lead Mines Estates have made application to the DQ for those funds, but they really, until they pay these bills or somebody pays the bills, really no means to get that reimbursement.
So, if we amend and appropriate this, it will be from the general fund?
It will be from the Water Department Fund, or wastewater fund. But my directions today to the county attorney was to respond to their request and say the reimbursement will never come to the county, it's going to them and they need to pay the bills.
So, if we don't want to pay this, we don't, there's no action necessary for all?
I think we're obligated to pay this because till we found out who did the spill, we called the people and brought them in because we had to because it was contaminating the wastewater treatment plant at Austinsville. So, we actually called these people and hired them. And then after we got this, the spill event contained, then we went back through the system and found where the spill originated and contacted those people. So, these people actually work for us, so I think we're obligated to pay them.
We need to pay it, then take action to recoup our money from...
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I like that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion to amend and appropriate the $16,432.60.
How much will the state pay us back on that? The full amount?
No.
Eighty percent?
Maybe. What they will pay for is the, a lot of the consultant services, but for the county's time, we had four, five, six people on overtime over there when it happened. We had equipment over there, booms, skimming things to get the diesel fuel out and separated. They've went through, the DQ is, I understand, preliminarily went through this and have declared a portion of it unreimbursable, which will be the property owner will have to pay that or his homeowner's insurance, one or the other.
So, the majority of this is the county employee?
I bet what you've got is the consultant fee. There's about $8,000 worth of overtime and equipment and stuff besides this. This is just a consultant bill.
Any other questions?
In the county attorney's letter, it talks about $21,000 and you're asking for a $16,000 transfer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, I assume that that difference was the county hazmat and the county employees. But it would appear once all the participants have chipped in, there's a normal route back to the homeowner's policy, is that correct?
That is where the county attorney is headed with this.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes, aye. Next, Mr. Dalton has passed out a draft resolution on Airport Commission. Mr. Dalton, would you like to summarize our meeting with the Airport, other members of the...
That is a very smooth way to put it back on me, Mr. Chairman. We met with Smith County, the Town of Marion, the Town of Whitfield, FAA, Delta Consultants, State of Virginia representative, Airport Commission members, Pilots Association, and We did a tour of the airport from the runways, looked at the projects, came back and listened to a little presentation from the airport and Delta Consultants about the projects and a little report from the FAA guy, I believe, of what, or where the airport was at and how the improvements would either positively or negatively affect the airport. Each one of us had an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. At the end of the day, what I think we all agreed upon is that the Airport Commission needs to follow directions from the funding sponsors, not start any projects prior to them providing full details of that. And I think, I may have missed some things, but I think everything that's in this resolution was discussed at the meeting about how they're to report from procurement to funding. I thought it was, it ended up as a fairly positive meeting that the Airport Commission agreed that it was the four sponsors, airport, they were only appointed members trying to operate and function as a board and should be seeking the direction from the four member entities, which was a reversal of the, I guess, what we've heard in the past. And at the end of the day, we also talked about adjusting fuel prices to actual cost and hangar prices, and they were supposed to meet after that meeting and do those adjustments. And this resolution sort of tries to summarize all those things and pass it around to all four localities. And annually, we would have a joint meeting for the funding agencies that would allow the Airport Commission to present their budgets and all funding, all the sponsors then would have input of whether they were going to think that was a worthy project or what they were doing. But at the end of the day, they've got to, I think they agreed to adjust fuel prices, hangar prices, and other issues. And this resolution is an attempt to try to put that in a form that all the four governing bodies can adopt the resolution and give them some guidance in the future of how we expect things to be run up there.
Only one thing they...
This thing does say draft.
Yeah, it says draft on it. And Mr. Dalton has sent this to the other funding agencies and he hasn't received a response back as of this time. There was the, the contract with the mechanic's hangar repair. It's, they just signed a five-year contract with him, so that's something that, that they've already done, that can't be changed right now. But I think, you know, overall, the commission members learn a lot and realize that they just couldn't force us to pay for something. I think they were some unclear about that. I think Mr. Leonard was unclear about that. After the meeting, I think he had a better understanding of how it worked.
May I ask you a question on this draft? Item number three, I think I understand what it's, what it's trying to say, develop pricing for all services at the airport to include total cost, including labor, utilities for hangar rentals and fuel sales. Do we not need a qualifying term in front of pricing? I mean, they have developed pricing. They have pricing right now. I mean, what we're saying is, we want it to be, I mean...
We don't want it subsidized price.
Wrong. I mean, what I'm saying is, is there a qualifying term that we need to put in there to, because, I mean, they could say, well, we're going to sell it for, you know, for 50 cents a gallon. That's a pricing, yeah. I mean, I understand what it's, what the purpose of this is, but I just wonder if we need, you know, a qualifying term in there to...
I mean, we could put in there, I had something more.
I guess you could say that maybe develop pricing that covers fuel costs, labor costs, and maintenance cost for fuel sales and hangar rental or even rental in their other buildings. They've got some, the old terminal building, and I, that they told us up there that Wings was looking at to rent, and that Wings turned them down. I understand. But what that statement is trying to cover, say is that you cover the, you can't hide, operate the cost of your fuel, your fuel truck, you're covering, you're replacing the hoses over in operation and sell this fuel at 50 cents below cost. I mean, they just can't do that. Profitable pricing would be...
Well, I think they had three different prices.
They did.
But I, do you want, maybe I'm just picking on my part.
It should be comparable to what other airports are charging.
Well, I mean, with this, the pricing for the services at the airport, that's the only way that they make money, right?
Yes. They don't, they do not charge landing fees or service cost.
So, I guess what I would, would wonder is, do we need something in there that it actually needs to be more than just cost recovery?
I agree. Otherwise, you're going to be having a project in the future, you're hiding that cost in operations to repair hoses or replace a tank. The tank, the fuel's going to eventually rust out. I mean, I don't know exactly the right wording, Mr. Haus, but I agree with you. And we'll, I think I sent that as a word document. Y'all can wordsmith it and make suggestions all you like. We'll incorporate back.
Well, I mean, do you understand what I'm...
I do.
Okay.
Hundred percent. Yeah, the intent was to make it, charge enough for your fuel to cover all that labor and et cetera, and it really doesn't say it because, you're correct, it says develop pricing. And somehow it needs to say that, to cover all costs associated.
Develop adequate pricing that would cover all, you know, total cost and, there's got to be a revenue stream in there somewhere.
It does.
Profitable.
You know, the current way the revenue stream is, is that over in operations, we pay for the fuel truck, we pay for the labor to put it in, we paid for the, the new roof they put on it, we've, the new hoses, and then they buy the fuel and, for $4.50 a gallon, then they charge them $4.85 or $4.95 or whatever the price is. But that's just recovering the fuel cost, and they're saying we make 45 cents a gallon. Well, that's not your cost because you got all this labor and other stuff that you're, you're hiding over there. If we can do that, I've got a couple of businesses I can start.
Well, I just, yeah, I guess my suggestion is maybe if we, you know, look at, at changing the wording a little bit there to, to make sure that they, you know, cover all the cost plus, you know, a margin. I don't know, I don't know exactly how to say it.
I mean, we haven't received anything from them, with no minutes from their meeting on what they did to fuel prices, have we?
Well, do we need to vote to...
I think, well, I don't think we need...
To draft.
Not on the draft. I mean, I think we need to continue to work on it, and if anybody has any suggestions or anything they need to add to the resolution, submit them.
So, we'll be looking for comments back from the other three bodies, too?
And we need to look for comments back from, from the other, you know, the three.
I have a question. Mr. Dalton, is there any capability, or did y'all discuss in that meeting, that the Commissioner take another look at tax on planes up there? That's just as much a sweetheart deal as renting the repair hangar for another five years.
Actually, that's, that subject was brought up, and Smith County said that they would discuss their, with their commissioner. The history of the taxi up there, quite a few years ago, you can, you can do different taxing schedules on planes, or cars, all kinds of personal property. The Commissioner and the board can set those rates. And years ago, over there, they had a really high rate on planes, and that was lowered because the theory was, that was promoted by the Airport Commission, was if you lower the rate, more planes would be hanger in there. Well, not only there were not, there are fewer planes hanger there now, but the Commissioner has let them do a depreciated schedule on planes, and we've went from collecting our portion, 12,000, 14,000, which was half of what they were collecting, so like 40, $30,000 or $40,000 worth of taxes, down to a couple thousand dollars worth of taxes. All those people are paying totally on all the planes. So, Smith County has, I guess, said they would look at that and talk to, and see where they could go, but maybe that's something that we need to understand a little better.
I realize that's separate from this resolution, but my question was, is there some way we can push that subject to the whole group? The only two that benefit from this is Smith County and Witfield County, correct?
Yes.
So, and the Commissioner is with Smith County.
And the Smith Board is the group that sets the rates. The Smith Board of Supervisors sets the rates.
Okay. Wouldn't it be appropriate for us to put it in writing to them to ask them to reevaluate that position because I think everyone in here would like to go out there and buy those planes for the amount that they're paying taxes on. We could have a real good sale and everybody would be happy.
We can do that. We will do that.
Okay.
So, if I'm, Witfield County have a plane and it's hanger at Smith County, the, the personal property tax rate I pay is a Smith County rate?
Yes, sir.
And the value of the plane is assessed by the Commissioner Revenue in Smith County?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And the revenue comes back to With County?
A portion thereof, half a portion.
Half of the...
And if it's a Smith County plane, obviously, nothing comes back to With County? Or does it? That should be a portion.
The way I understand the agreement, half of the total tax is collected.
So Smith or With?
Because I think that, as far as With County, we don't have but one plane there.
I got a copy of all the hangar agreements. We've got several planes over there.
Very several? I just happened to see Smith County Administrator, he was marking, and I just seen one for, he was going through on them and marking.
Yeah, if you look at the hangar rentals, there are several planes from With County there.
Okay.
They had said one, but there's more than one plane.
I see. Okay.
And if you've got any more suggestions of things that we've talked that shouldn't be in this resolution, we'll be passing it back and forth between Marion, Withfull, and everybody else, Smith County, over the next couple of weeks. So just send us an email and we'll get those comments incorporated.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move right on. With agenda, we have the 2014 PPTRA Resolution. I'll read it here. This is Resolution 2014-16. Whereas the Personal Property Tax Relief Act of 1998, Virginia Code 58.1-3523, PPTRA, and subsequent revisions to the PPTRA legislation. And whereas the, this, these legislative enactments require the county to take affirmative steps to annually implement these changes and to provide for the, for the compensation and allegation, allegations to relief, of relief provided pursuant to the PPTRA as revised. And whereas these legislative enactments provide, provide for the appropriations to the county of a fixed sum to be used exclusively for the provision of tax relief to, to owners of qualified personal use vehicles that are subject to the personal property tax on such vehicles. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors that qualifying vehicles obtaining status within the county during tax year 2014 shall receive personal property tax relief in the following manner. Registered personal use vehicles valued at $1,000 or less will be eligible for 100% tax relief. Registered personal use vehicles valued at $1,001 to $20,000 will be eligible for 44.84% tax relief. Registered personal use vehicles valued at $20,001 or more shall only be eligible for 44.84% tax relief on the first $20,000 of value. And all other vehicles which do not meet the definition of qualifying business use vehicles, motorhomes, titled but, but unregistered vehicles, et cetera, as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, will not be eligible for any form of tax relief under this program. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So may I?
I have a second.
I have a second.
Any discussion?
In the last bolded item, it explains clearly that it's titled but unregistered vehicles do not meet the definition of qualifying. All other vehicles which do not meet, okay, they, unregistered, titled but unregistered will not qualify, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any more questions? I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Resolution passes. We have another resolution, hazardous material emergency response plan. Resolution 2014-17, hazardous materials emergency response plan adoption. Whereas the Superfund Amendment and Reauthorization Act of 1998, 96, excuse me, 1996.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, I'm sorry. Requires the development of a detailed emergency response procedure. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has adopted the Emergency Operation Plan in April of 2008. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors recognize the need to prepare for, to prepare for, respond to, and recover from hazardous materials disaster. And where, whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has a responsibility to provide for the safety and welfare of its citizens and visitors. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has established and appointed a director and coordinator of emergency management. And therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors, this hazardous material emergency response plan is revised, is officially adopted, and it is further resolved and ordered that the Director of Emergency Management or his or her designate are tasked to maintain and present revisions as necessary to the Board for approval over the next four-year period. I entertain a motion.
So may I?
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is friends with K9, Ms. Johnson.
They are not here tonight. They've, want to be put on the October the 14th meeting, night meeting.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is a closed meeting.
Before we go to closed session, under, could we move to other?
Yes, sir.
I believe, I think, on your desk, a change order for Spiegel, for Spiegel Division 1A, change order number four, which is a quantity adjustment. We usually take these through the water department, but we're trying to close this thing out and, so the final quantity adjustments increase the contract price by $26,875.50. I would request that you approve this change order. And it also increases the days, too, as noted.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we, we accept this change order.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a request for approval of executed change order number fours. Any, any questions?
And this is just a normal procedure that we have on all, all contracts.
Yes.
Does it stay within the funding available?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Here and now, the roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Is anything else under other, Mr. Dalton, before we can move to closed session?
We, we had had a request at the last meeting for, from two employees, for the board to consider early retirement provisions. Our committee agreed that we would consider that, but include it as part of the budgetary process for 2016, FY16, which means if we get started here in just a few weeks, by the time we get all those calculations finished, it'll be ready for the presentation budget to the board in January of 2015.
And it was not just for those two employees, for anybody that qualifies?
There is a group of five people that would qualify. So we're going to have a meeting with those people and ask them to make a commitment if they want to...
And DSS employees? And DSS employees?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm, pardon me, there is a contract laying on your desk.
Yes.
Engineering thing?
Engineering contract. It was hidden under my papers here. Months and months ago, we interviewed engineering firms in this boardroom, to be exact, four firms, I believe it was. We had picked Pete Boortz and his team to be the selected firm. We have an agreement on your table that Mr., don't want to put words in Mr. Bond's mouth, but he's reviewed and, and we have a schedule and a, a contract amount that fits well beneath the fee curve and the, and what we had budgeted for the engineering and development of the access road out to Progress Park. We'd asked that this, be authorized to sign this agreement and move forward that project.
I have a motion to authorize Mr. Dalton, Mr. Dalton, to sign the agreement. Here and to the agreement.
So may I?
I have a second. Any discussion or questions?
Is that, is that the cost that's way over in this document under suggested format, What is the actual cost of this contract?
Under Exhibit C? It's front and back, Joe, so if you go to the back and come back about five pages or four pages.
Did you say Exhibit C?
Exhibit C. The total lump sum contract price is $635,000. And that is in the budget for this year?
This is just the engineering note, I mean...
This is just the engineer. This is the public hearings, the property, the appraisals, from beginning to end, I understand, Bill. And if you look at the schedule, that'll tell you exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it's going to be, your drawdown. You mentioned the curve. What, what's the magic number here? What's the percentage number? Ten percent, twelve percent? Where is it?
Well, the total cost of the project is somewhere about eight million, so you're down around six percent, Joe. Take away the traffic impact analysis, which is the preliminary engineering, the hundred thousand dollar one, the upfront. That's basically getting to the point, the VDOT says you can design. So it's five hundred and some thousand dollars, and that includes your property appraisals, all the associated stuff. It's just not your design fee.
Yeah, this, this is part of what they are agreeing to do.
Yes.
And this is stringing it out to...
July 2016.
Yeah, the end of 16.
Middle of 16.
July of 16.
So long ago.
Any other questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes.
And for further clarification, this, two years ago, or three years ago, we applied for revenue sharing funds and, and received revenue sharing funds that, for Phase One, which was the design. And this contract is a couple hundred thousand dollars below what was allocated in that, by VDOT to do that. Bill did a great job negotiating this, working through the numbers.
I take it we haven't heard anything from BDOT on Secretary of Commerce's visit? Have we heard anything from BDOT?
We have not.
Anything else before we go into closed session?
I think we're down to the bottom of the pile now.
I entertain a motion.
I'll move that the With County Board of Supervisors convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code 2-2, 2.2-3711A5, with a matter involving a prospective new business or industry.
I have a second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in closed session.
I'll certify, certification of closed meeting. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
I have a second.
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the staff and, and the chairman to sign documents associated with an unannounced industry proposal and to amend and appropriate $205,000 to the joint IDA.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Mr. Dalton, is any other business become, needs to come before the board? Okay. Any, any board member has anything to bring up? Here and now, clear this meeting adjourned.